Good evening. This is the one second meeting of the 71st term of the Baltimore City Council. Now call to order, please turn off all cell phones or put them on vibrate. Meeting of the City Council is open to the public for the duration of the meeting. Persons attending must behave in an orderly manner or be subject to removal. Council chambers must be cleared at the conclusion of the meeting. Failure to comply may result in a charge of trespassing. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Michael Hudson of Gosemane AME Church. After invocation, please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Amen. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you in the name of Jesus Christ. We come giving you praise, honor, and glory for allowing us to assemble on this day. God, we pray for your presence in this place. We pray, God, for your guiding spirit, Lord. We pray for wisdom, God, for every decision that we make. God, that it would be a positive influence within our communities and our precious city of Baltimore. God, lead and guide us in every step that we take. We praise you. We magnify your holy name. And it's in Jesus' name that we pray and say amen.
Amen. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pastor, thank you. Want to thank Pastor Hudson for the invocation. The clerk will call the role of the members.
President Young, Scott, Middleton, Welsh, Reissinger, Stokes, Branch.
Do we have a quorum?
No, not yet.
We're going to need a quorum, so we're going to ask council members to please take their seats.
Start over.
Yes, start over.
President Young, Scott, Specter, Middleton, Welsh, Reissinger, Costello, Stokes, Clark. Mr. President, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Tonight's showcase Baltimore presentation is representative of Bard High School.
Good evening, members of the City Council and guests. My name is Francesca Gamber. It's my privilege to be the head of the Early College at Bard High School, Early College Baltimore, which is a new school, a contract school, that opened through a partnership between Baltimore City Schools and Bard College just about two months ago. August 31st was our first day. Bard College is a small, private liberal arts college in upstate New York, but it's a private college in the public interest. So, we are the seventh early college high school that Bard has opened in partnership with public school districts across the country, including three campuses in New York City, one in Newark, New Jersey, one in Cleveland, Ohio, and one in New Orleans. So, as a resident of Baltimore and a second-generation public educator here in the city, both of my parents were Baltimore City Schools teachers for 30 years. I'm really excited to be involved in bringing this school to Baltimore for the first time. What makes our school exciting and unique is that it's an early college. So, in addition to being a high school where students graduate with a high school diploma, they're instructed by college professors, so people with PhDs in their discipline. They're able to earn up to 60 college credits with us and graduate with an Associate of Arts degree in liberal arts alongside their high school diploma. So, being able to earn an associate's degree tuition-free is a really significant cost savings for families in our city, and it also puts our students on the road to attaining the bachelor's degree and to that post-secondary and career success that's so important to them. So, we are about two months into our school year. We have 162 really fascinating students. They come to us from about 22 different zip codes from over 50 middle and high school programs that sent students to us. We also have about 15% of our students who have come back to Baltimore City Schools from private parochial or homeschooling. And we think that that's a really significant percentage that we would like to see grow. We have 11 faculty members and three administrators. About 50% of our faculty and staff moved to Baltimore from other states in order to work at our school. So, we see this as this school has the potential to be a key driver of people back to the city, whether they're coming to us to work or they're coming to us as students. We have a vibrant academic and extracurricular life. Just today, we had midterm exams, and what midterm exams at an early college look like is going into our ninth-grade survey of music class, and the students are using empty water bottles and yardsticks and things that they found around the school to create their own compositions in the manner of the musical stomp. So, it was really exciting to see that kind of innovation in the context of a midterm exam. So, I want to thank all of you for your support. Many of you have come to visit us already. Please do come see us anytime we're on Wolf Street in East Baltimore. Oh, yes. Council President Young asked me to mention that some of Bard College's distinguished graduates include the actor Chevy Chase. Yeah. So, I'm sure that we'll see some similarly quirky but really interesting folks coming out of Bard, Baltimore as well.
Thank you. It is the council custom to generalize the invocation. I ask for motion to generalize the prayer. Motion by Vice President Reissinger, second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor who generalize the prayer, say aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The motion is adopted. We will now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the general of the proceedings from the October 26th City Council meeting is on the council members' desks.
Is there a motion to approve the journal? Motion by Councilman Craft, second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of adopting the journal, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is carried. The journal is adopted. Bill signed by the mayor can be found on page two to three of the agenda. Executive nominations.
EA 15-0302, Jessica Salmon, Member, Commission on Disabilities, 11th District.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee. Bills will be introduced.
City Council Bill 15-0585, Tax Credits, Historic Properties, Ordinance for the Purpose of Extending the Period Within Which Applications May Be Accepted for an Historic Improvement Tax Credit, Clarifying the Definition of Eligible Improvements, Restating the Purpose and Goal of this credit, Modifying Certain Criteria for Credit Limitation imposed on Development Projects That Exceed a Certain Amount in Construction Costs, Modifying Certain Procedures for Adopting Rules and Regulations Governing the Credit, Providing for a Special Effective Date, and General Relating to the Property Tax Credit for Improvements, Restorations, and Rehabilitation to Historic Properties. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 15-0586, University of Maryland Baltimore BioPark Development District, Ordinance for the Purpose of Designating a Development District to be known as the University of Maryland Baltimore BioPark Development District, Providing for and Determining Various Matters in Connection with the Establishment of the Development District, Creating a Special Tax Increment Fund for the Development District, Allocating Certain Property Taxes to that fund, Making Certain Findings and Determinations, Providing for a Special Effective Date, and Generally Providing for Matters Relating to the Designation and Operation of the Development District and the Establishment and Use of the Special Tax Increment Fund to Provide for the Payment by or Reimbursement to the City for Debt Service which the City is Obligated to Pay or Has Paid on any Special Obligation Bond or Notes issued by the City in Connection with the Development District, the Replenishment of any Reserve Fund, and the Payment of Certain Expenses and Administrative Costs Related to the Operation of the Development District. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 15-0587, University of Maryland Baltimore BioPark Development Bond Ordinance, Ordinance for the Purpose of Authorizing the Maryland City Council, Ordinance for the Purpose of Authorizing the Issuance of Special Obligation Bonds, Authorizing the Pledge by the City Subject to Appropriation of Tax Increment Revenues and Special Tax Revenues to the Payment of Debt Service on Such Special Obligation Bonds, the Replenishment of Any Reserves, and the Payment of Certain Expenses and Administrative Costs, Providing that Such Bonds May be Issued from Time to Time and in One or More Issues or Series in an Aggregate Principal Amount Not Exceeding $17.5 Million for the Purpose of Financing Infrastructure Improvements and Related Costs, Including Without Limitation the Project and Other Necessary Improvements Too From or Within the Development District and Certain Other Infrastructure Improvements Permitted by the Acts, Providing for the Method and Sources of Payment for Such Special Obligation Bonds, Providing that the City in each Fiscal Year in which any such bonds are outstanding use its best efforts to obtain the appropriation of the Tax Increment Revenues and the Special Tax Revenues and the amounts and at the times specified in the Trust Agreement or Agreements between the City and the Bank or Trust Company appointed as trustee thereunder, authorizing the Board of Finance to specify, prescribed, to specify, prescribe, determine, provide for, and approve the details, forms, documents, or procedures in connection with such special obligation bonds and any other matters necessary or desirable in connection with authorization, issuance, sale, and property of such special obligation bonds, providing for a special effective date, and generally relating to the issuance and payment of such special obligation bonds. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 15-0588, University of Maryland Baltimore BioPark Special Taxing District, Ordinance for the Purpose of Designating a Special Taxing District to be known as the University of Maryland Baltimore BioPark Special Taxing District, Providing for and Determining Various Matters in Connection with the Establishment of the Special Taxing District, Creating a Special Fund for the Special Taxing District, Providing for the Levy of a Special Tax on all taxable real and personal property located in the Special Taxing District, Authorizing the Pledge of the Special Tax Revenues to the Payment by or Reimbursement to the City for Debt Service on any Special Obligation Bonds or Notes issued by the City in Connection with the Special Taxing District, the Replenishment of any Reserve Fund, Providing for a Special Effective Date, and Generally Providing for Matters Relating to the Designation and Operation of the Special Taxing District, the Establishment and Use of the Special Fund, and the Payment of Certain Expenses and Administrative Costs Related to the Operation of the Special Taxing District. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 15-0589, Employees Retirement System, Credit for Prior Contractual Service to City, Ordinance for the Purpose of Granting a Service Credit for Certain Pre-Employment Contractual Services Provided to the City, Providing for Computation of that Credit, Subject to a Certain Maximum, and Specifying the Purposes for which that Credit is to be applied. Sponsored Curran.
This has been assigned, your co-sponsor? Oh. This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 15-0590, Demolition, Etc., of City Structures, Ordinance for the Purpose of Prohibiting the Demolition or Reconstruction of Certain City-Owned Structures Unless Expressly Authorized by an Ordinance of the Maryland City Council, Defining Certain Terms, and Requiring that on introduction of a proposed authorizing ordinance, the bill be referred to certain agencies for their reports and recommendations. Sponsored Henry, President Young, Middleton, Costello, Craft, Clark, Reissinger.
Please note, Councilwoman Specter as a co-sponsor, Councilman Welch, Councilman Scott, any more co-sponsors. This has been assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee. There are no resolutions tonight. Henry, have one?
No.
Oh, you want to, you want to co-sponsor?
If you want to comment on it.
Oh, you want to comment on the bill? You're a co-sponsor. Please note, Councilman Mosby is a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sorry. I had promised some of my colleagues that I would explain what the bill does so that maybe I can even get some more co-sponsors. This was correcting what I hope is just an oversight in the policy that the city already has. We have to do a Maryland City Council Ordinance to name a piece of city-owned property. We have to do a Maryland City Council Ordinance if we wish to sell a piece of city-owned property to a private owner. So, when I was asked by community members what the process was for knocking down a city-owned building, like a rec center or a library or a school, and I looked into it, I was a little surprised to find out that you did not, in fact, require Maryland City Council Ordinance for this. So, hopefully, this is just going to be completing that, closing that loop, so that if there is a building in a community which the city seeks to knock down, the community would have the full councilmatic legislative process in which to express any concerns. So, thank you.
Thank you. You can find the Consent Council in Section A at the back of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Council? Motion by Councilman Scott, second by Councilwoman Middleton. All those in favor of approving the Consent Council, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion carried. This Council is approved. Chair recognizes Councilman Mosby.
President, Mr. President, I move that we extend floor privileges.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of extending floor privileges to the guests of Councilman Mosby, say aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Councilman Mosby, you may extend floor privileges to your guests.
Ms. Ayesha Alexander, if you could please step forward. She's the Director of Community Initiatives for Kaboom. Last week, the President, Councilman Carl Stokes, as well as Councilman Pete Welch, had the opportunity to work on playgrounds throughout the entire city. You know, Kaboom is really committed to the city of Baltimore. They've agreed to rebuild 10 playgrounds in the city of Baltimore. Last Saturday, two of which were in my district on Monroe Street, as well as at Gilmore Elementary School. You know, Gilmore Elementary School, those children were in the middle of the April's unrest and have seen some trying days, and you know, just waking up, looking at a brand-new playground, I'm pretty sure provided some much-needed excitement for them. And we would just like to thank Kaboom from the City Council for your dedication to the city of Baltimore, for you ensuring that the children of Baltimore City have active playgrounds that are quality and are new and are fresh, that they can enjoy before and after school. Another thing is through it, Kaboom was able to provide youth job opportunities for youth around the city. What was the total number? 10? 54. So, 54 youth were hired to kind of spearhead the effort of going out and getting volunteers, as well as spreading the word through the community, and was a true commitment to the private-public partnerships that we need in the city of Baltimore. So... Mr. President, if you could come down? Mr. President, you might come in? Do you guys want to come in? All the other council members, if you would like to come in the picture, but because this is not for me, this is from the City Council. The City Council Baltimore Resolution, be it hereby known to all that the City Council of Baltimore offers its sincerest congratulations to Ms. Ayesha Alexander in recognition of Kaboom's outstanding work to bring play to urban communities throughout the city of Baltimore. The entire membership extends best wishes on this memorable occasion and directs this resolution be presented on the second day of November 2015, signed by President Bernard C. Jack Young and myself, Nick J. Mosby, Councilman for the 7th District. Thank you so much. We're going to take a picture. You still in the booth? Come on, Rick.
No, you're okay. Come on.
We truly appreciate your commitment. And last but not least, we have one more, if I could extend even further, to Chef Tia Berry, if you could please come forward. So, we do a thing every year when folks have New Year resolutions that they're going to lose weight. Weight, I do it every year, but we do something called Councilman Nick Mosby Get Fit Challenge, where we provide free memberships to gyms from water aerobics to kickboxing to all types of exercise to strength training from eight-years-old all the way up to 88-years-old. But another key thing that we do with the Councilman Get Fit Challenge is we partner with the American Heart Association to provide folks with cooking lessons on how to cook healthier and eat healthier, because at the end of the day, that's a huge variable in the equation of our health. Knowing that many sections of our city have health disparities, that's kind of what's the nexus behind the program, and we would just like to thank you today. So, really quickly, the City Council Baltimore Resolution, be it hereby known to all that the City Council Baltimore offers its sincerest congratulations to Chef Tia Berry in recognition of your outstanding leadership of the American Heart Association's Simple Cook, Cooking with the Heart Kitchen, to teach all Baltimoreans how to prepare healthier meals. This entire membership extends the best wishes on this memorable occasion and directs this resolution be presented on the second day of November 2015, signed by Council President Bernard C. Jack Young and myself, Nick J. Mosby of the 7th District. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and thank you, Councilman Mosby. Third reader to be held, one meeting.
City Council Bill 15-0545, Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to a Three Family Dwelling Units in the R8 zoning district, variances 704 North Gilmore Street, for the Purpose of Permitting, Subject to Certain Conditions, the Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to a Three Family Dwelling Units in the R8 zoning district on the property known as 704 North Gilmore Street as outlined on red on the accompanying plat, and granting variances from certain lot area sizes, off-street parking, and floor-area ratio requirements.
Third reader for final pass.
City Council Bill 14-0426, Rezoning 1713 East Pratt Street, for the Purpose of Changing the Zoning for the Property Known as 1713 East Pratt Street as outlined on red on the accompanying plat, from the R8 zoning district to the B22 zoning district, President Young, Craft, Scott, Henry, Specter, Middleton, Mosby, Welsh, Reissinger, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 15-0503, Zoning Conditional Use Secondhand Store, 2412 East Monument Street, for the Purpose of Permitting, Subject to Certain Conditions, the Establishment, Maintenance, and Operation of a Secondhand Store on the Property Known as 2412 East Monument Street as outlined on red on the accompanying plat, President Young, Craft, Scott, Henry, Specter, Middleton, Mosby, Welsh, Reissinger, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 15-0542, Rezoning Certain Properties in the Remington Central Business Area, for the Purpose of Changing the Zoning for the Properties Known in the, for the Properties in the Remington Central Business Area as outlined on blue on the accompanying plat, from the R7 zoning district to the B12 zoning district, as outlined on red on the accompanying plat, from the R8 zoning district to the B12 zoning district, and outlined on green on the accompanying plat, from the R9 zoning district to the B12 zoning district, President Young, Craft, Scott, Henry, Specter, Middleton, Mosby, Welsh, Reissinger, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 15-0546, Building Fire and Related Codes 2015 Edition, for the Purpose of Adopting a Revised Building Fire and Related Codes Article comprising of Maryland Building Performance Standards, the International Building Code, the National Electrical Code, the International Fuel/Gas Code, the International Mechanical Code, the International Plumbing Code, the International Property Maintenance Code, the International Fire Code, the International Energy Conservation Code, the International Residential Code for One and Two Family Dwellings, the International Green Conservation Code, and the International Swimming Pool and Spa Code, all as supplemented, amended, or otherwise modified by this ordinance, providing for the effect, construction, and effective date of these new standards and codes, correcting obsolete agency references, conforming, correcting, and clarifying certain language, and generally relating to the adoption of new building, fire, property maintenance, electrical, plumbing, mechanical, and related codes for Baltimore City, President Young, Craft, Scott, Henry, Specter, Middleton, Mosby, Welsh, Reissinger, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 15-0551, Franchise Crown Castle NG Atlantic LLC, for the Purpose of Granting a Franchise to Crown Castle NG Atlantic LLC, a Virginia Limited Liability Company, to construct, install, maintain, repair, operate, relocate, replace, and remove certain facilities relating to the provision of a distributed antenna systems, service in and across certain streets and public ways, subject to certain terms and conditions, and providing for a special effective date, President Young, Craft, Scott, Henry, Specter, Middleton, Mosby, Welsh, Reissinger, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
This bill is approved. Committee announcement. Chair recognizes Councilman Craft.
Mr. President, the Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will conduct a hearing on Council Bill 150567. This is a charter amendment establishing a Children and Youth Fund on Wednesday, December 16th, 2015, at 5:00 PM here in the council chambers, and this hearing will be televised on TV 25. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Committee announcements. Committee announcements. Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes. No committee announcement over here? Oh, excuse me, Councilman Stokes. Committee announcements. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Middleton.
The Urban Affairs and Aging Committee will hear City Council Bill 150564 on December 3rd at 3:00 PM here in council chambers. It's the Waterfront Management District, the extension of the district, and we will also hear on the same day, December 3rd, 2015, City Council Bill 150570 at 3:10 PM here in council chambers, and it's the Urban Renewal Highland Town Business Area Amendment, but we, I just had a conversation with the councilperson of that district, and I'm going to not, I'm just going to drop this one. So, we're just going to have the one. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development, at our last hearing on the audits committed that we would do every 30 days or so, a legislative oversight update on where we were with the current status of the city audit. So, we're going to have a oversight hearing on November 12th, next Thursday, at 10:00 AM here in chambers, for the purpose of calling our representatives from the Department of Audits and the Department of Finance to brief the committee on the current status of the city audits. Thank you.
Thank you. Committee announcement. Chair recognizes Councilman Welch.
Thank you, Mr. President. Executive Appointments will hear Council Bill 150302 on Wednesday, November 4th, at 10:00 AM in council chambers, to hear Jessica Salmon as a member of the Commission on Disabilities.
Committee announcements. Regular announcements. Chair recognizes Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, members of the council today, the President, Vice President Reissinger, Councilman Costello, Councilman Stokes, Councilman Henry, and I join Big Brothers Big Sisters for the kickoff of the Be More, Be Big campaign. We know that in our city, there are a lot of young men, 250 to be exact, that are on a waiting list for mentors. After the events of April and the violence thereafter, we saw a big increase of over 1,700 people that stepped up and said they wanted to be a mentor. Unfortunately, only 43 men in the city of Baltimore followed through with their promise to be a mentor, and only 14 of those men are actually matched with a young man. So, throughout the month of November, we're asking you to shame, push, force every man that you know, able-bodied, that can, to mentor a young man in the city of Baltimore. This is very important. More than anything, what these young men need is the time, time, human capital, time and energy from a caring adult. We know that mentoring changes and saves lives, but we have to do it. Women of Baltimore, we'd like to thank you, because the majority of people who mentor people in our city, young men in our city, are women, but it's time for us, the men, to get off the sideline and get involved. If you're hearing, if your husband wants to get involved, or even if he doesn't, and you want more information for him, visit big, visit biglittle.org, or just call 410-243-4000. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Scott, and that was a really, really great event. We already got some hits on Facebook, so I'm hoping you follow up. Some ex-police colonels and majors said that they were interested in being mentors, so we're going to reach out to all of them, and we hope that we can get other males throughout the city of Baltimore, especially those who signed up to really step up. Any more committee announcements? Committee announcements, I mean, regular announcements. Regular announcements. Chair recognizes Councilman Welch.
Thank you, Mr. President. In the audience, I have a young man who has gone far beyond the call of duty. I have Mr. Anthony Fraterno. Would you stand up, Anthony? Anthony's a student at Curley High School who has given back so much to his neighborhood, to his community. He cooks, he cleans, I'd marry him if he was, well, you know what I mean. But, but he does all of those wonderful things that we don't see ordinarily in neighborhoods and in students, and I just want to salute him, and I did present him with a resolution. I just wanted to let the city of Baltimore know that we do have positive young people in our neighborhoods. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. I want to thank my staff. I want to thank Councilwoman Clark for coming out to take the pictures. We had Do It Now Day in honor of Mayor William Donald Schaefer, Governor William Donald Schaefer, Donald Schaefer, and then Comptroller William Donald Schaefer. We planted four trees, one out in front of City Hall, one in front of municipal building, and I think a couple at Wall Memorial. So, I just want to thank my staff for remembering Do It Now Day, and... So, I just want to thank my staff for remembering Do It Now Day, and just thank the citizens of Baltimore. We ask that you do it now, clean up around your neighborhoods, and try to make Baltimore a cleaner and safer place. With that, Chair recognizes Council, Vice President Reisinger.
Mr. President, members of the council, the next meeting of the City Council will be held on Monday, November 9th, at 5:00 p.m. in the council chambers. Thank you.
Thank you. There have been no further business. This concludes the one-second meeting of the Sunday First Term of the Baltimore City Council. Good night.